Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council. Today is February 1st, 2019. It's 6:05 PM. I call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Cranjack?
Here.
Councilperson Woo?
Here.
Sung?
Here.
Savari?
Here.
Park?
Aversa?
Yes.
O?
Here.
Borough Attorney? Municipal Clerk. Everyone is present, Mayor, except Councilwoman Park and Borough Attorney Wachy.
Okay, we tried to schedule this, uh, meeting at the last minute. Um, Councilwoman O asked for it. I told her I wasn't available this evening, but I was able to fly back sooner. I offered Monday. Um, and also, at a deference to our Chinese, uh, community and people who celebrate with them, um, their Chinese New Year festivities today at the, um, upper school, um, I felt badly that, um, Councilwoman O persisted in wanting to have it today. Uh, so we're here, and I apologize to the Chinese-American community, uh, in town. Well, let's have the, uh, flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, benevolent, and just as it is.
Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
I had a good notice that this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Same time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is unfilled with municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing approved readings by the municipal clerk and Mayor.
Mr. Wachy, you will sit here tonight at the table.
I'll sit here.
No, no, I'm the Chair of the Meeting. I'm telling you that-
Now put the Borough Attorney there. That'd be disrespectful to me.
No, you're-
It's not gonna be disrespectful to me.
Mr. Wachy-
It's not gonna be disrespectful to me.
Officer Craples, please see to it that he sits there and does not approach the dais.
You are not going to instruct an officer to do that at all. I am the Borough Attorney.
No, you, you are not sitting up here. You are not sitting up here.
Mayor, he needs to-
You are not sitting up here, given all the, all the bad things you've done in the last month. You could sit down there.
How about a vote?
I make a motion.
There's no vote. Now, there's no vote. It's Roberts rules, I decide where you sit.
You don't have that under Roberts rules.
I do, actually.
You don't have that under Roberts rules.
Officer Craples, please have him seated.
So you're under Roberts rules?
Please, Officer Craples, I am in charge of this meeting.
Push the button again, why don't you?
Have a seat, have a seat, take your coffee.
I'm right here.
There's a motion on the floor, Mayor.
You're not going here. There's no motion, I, I control this meeting.
There's a motion on the floor.
No, Officer Craples, please.
We're making a motion. A motion, I'm sitting here.
No, 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 Miss.
Up top.
Under, under Roberts rules of order, I decide where you sit, Mr. Wachy.
No, you're not, you don't have the authority.
You are not an elected official, although you've been behaving like you were one. You have no authority.
Mayor, you do not have the authority.
I, I'm telling you what the rules are, and I am in charge of this meeting, and I'm directing you to remove him and put him down there.
Mayor, you don't have the authority.
No, you're not, no, you're not, actually. You're not.
As your lawsuit says.
Yes, as your lawsuit says.
So let me-
Did you mention that to everybody?
I, I will, actually, because you should be sitting down there. You're not representing the borough. You're representing a political party, and everything you've done since January 3rd-
Has made this town better.
You've ruined everything in this town.
Has made this town better.
No, actually, let me tell you what you've done. You, you, you failed to follow any direction from me.
We have a motion.
You failed to include me in anything. You failed to communicate with me.
You failed to make a lawsuit against my child.
And then you, you settle lawsuits without involving me.
Because you were involved in-
You have Debbie Savari and yourself going to Baby Padavano trying to settle things.
When did we go to Baby Padavano?
I'm directing you to sit down there.
I'm not.
Officer Craples?
He's not gonna do it, Mayor.
You do not belong up here. You do not belong up here.
I have no disre-
And just for everyone at home-
You're gonna disrespect me because you have a problem with the fact that you have been marginalized based on your own conduct, no one else's.
You, you need to-
Mayor, there's a motion on the floor.
Sit down. Let me, let me tell everyone at home, what's happening in these towns-
Call, call.
What, no, what's happening in these, I don't recognize you. What's happening in these towns at the state and at the federal level is that people who are not elected officials with no authority-
Like judges?
Decide that, all of a sudden, they're going to start running things, like Mr. Wachy. He decides that he has authority. I've been telling him for months that he doesn't, for weeks, rather. Officer Craples, please remove him, put him down.
What happened? I have a super question. You give me a justification of-
I will give you justification.
Under Roberts rules?
Under Roberts rules, I control the dais.
You do not.
Yes, I do.
Absolutely wrong.
And under our bylaws as well.
Why don't I get you a little podium, and then you can stand high?
I am the Chair of the Meeting. You need to go down there.
Why are you being so petty?
Because I don't, Mr. Wachy does not represent the borough.
We never had the Borough Attorney sit on the side of the microphone.
Lieutenant Tracy, Mr. Wachy needs to sit down there.
Mayor, we never had the Borough Attorney sit at the desk.
Mr., Mr. Wachy is not an elected official.
He's not allowed to-
Excuse me, excuse me, you do not have the floor, you are not recognized.
You can recognize her.
You will sit down there.
I will.
You will sit down there, because what you have done in the last month-
You will not.
No? You sit down.
What you have done in the last month is just terrible. You do not represent this borough, you do not represent this governing body. You represent five people on this governing body.
You represent the entire governing body.
You have done nothing good for this town. You have thrown money at Chief Chaffee.
Mayor, this is how you're gonna start this special meeting.
Absolutely, because you-
You know what, everybody should be watching this.
You should watch this, because what happens in this town is-
He's our mayor.
Is people who are not elected officials with no authority decide that they could act like this. You need to leave, go down there and be an unelected official.
He's not going down there.
I'm directing Lieutenant Tracy to remove him.
Mayor, there's no authority for you to do that.
We could recess from here.
Can you recess, or are you-
We're in recess.
Is that time for that?
Yeah, go talk to them.
I'm not gonna talk to them, you go talk to them. I, I'm-
All right, let's have a mo-
Back from recess.
We're back from recess. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion first.
Who wants to?
So move.
Your, your motion is improper if it's about having Mr. Wachy sit up here, because-
No, I'm not talking about that.
What's your motion?
I'd like to limit the, given that we have expressions, they limit the public to three minutes each.
That, that wasn't in the, a public notice.
Doesn't have to be.
It wasn't in the public notice.
It doesn't, that doesn't have to be in the public notice, and you know it.
We have this professor of law.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not limiting people's time to speak.
You don't have to, the motions are on the floor.
I believe I have it resolved, but we would like to speak with everybody in private.
Now, we're, we're doing open-
I'm sorry.
We're, we're doing public, public portion.
Is a motion-
No, we came back on. If anybody-
Is it a public?
No, I'm not.
There's a motion on the table, second.
There's a motion on the floor.
You're, you're, so you're, you're actually in subordinate right now, if you sit here.
You say that all the time, General.
And let me tell you something. Okay, now, stop, you don't have the floor. I had enough.
Yeah, don't, don't-
You didn't solve the problem with Helen Tracy, okay? You didn't solve the problem, because he's still here.
I thought you were still in recess.
No, we're out of recess.
Rough to me, okay? Um, I have some concerns about the settlement with the, uh, police chief and all the lawsuits and all that. Uh, I think as a taxpayer and as a resident, I would like to know what those agreements are. Uh, that should have been something that the public has a right to know on what you all decided to settle. Um, I am, I am-
I did not, I did not decide to settle.
My, my concern is, this is my time. Uh, my concern is, is that I'm not quite sure, um, in the scope of everything that went on with those tapes, which I, I do intend to listen to, um, that, that, that things were minimized in some way by this board, and I'm just wondering, you know, the way we have tapes about McMaro and Lizette and whatever went on, I wonder what other tapes the chief has, and I wonder what he has on some people here, and I, I am really concerned about your votes and what motivated them.
Well, really, yeah, but they, they settled it without getting the actual recorder back.
That's not true.
You have the recorder?
It's coming.
It's coming, you don't have the recorder?
It's coming.
It's coming, it's been coming for six months.
Yeah. Okay, so, so this is my concern as a resident and a taxpayer. I'm losing so much trust in this town. I, I love this town, I've been here 30 years, um, I have lots of friends, and, uh, obviously, I have created some enemies, even though I haven't done anything personally to anybody, uh, up there or back there. And my concern is, is that I'm not, I'm no longer feeling comfortable being a resident here with how things are being decided, I'm not so sure for whose benefit. I thought all the benefit was supposed to be for the residents that live here, and I, I feel that, you know, maybe we pick and choose who we go easy on and who we go hard on, okay? So that, that's my main concern. The other concern is 800 Sylvan. I'm also concerned who benefits from 800 Sylvan? Who has a vested interest in 800 Sylvan? And are we really, truly going to fight this, or are we just going to go along because it benefits some members of this community? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Woo, I, I know you had to leave for the school performance, and that's been boring, so, uh, thank you for coming.
I appreciate it, thank you.
It's at 7:30.
It's at 7:30, I gotta help them with the preparation.
All right, so feel free to leave when you want.
Thank you.
By the way, uh, Councilwoman Woo was not available on Monday for the breakfast.
There's other days.
To your point.
There are other days next week.
Number of things we need to discuss.
Anybody else in the public? Yes.
Take care.
Take care.
Good evening, Adonis Morfesus, 26th Gou Street, Englewood Cliffs. I'd like to thank the council, I'd like to thank you, sir, for settling the cases and getting this albatross of $1.8 million of Englewood Cliffs back. Number two, I'd like to know why we need a police officer here, like a sergeant-at-arms.
That's exactly-
And pay part of this, sir.
Exactly, yeah.
Just give me a second. Okay? We're not violent people, we don't need a sergeant-at-arms-
We do need a sergeant-at-arms.
-to pay overtime.
We do need a sergeant-at-arms.
Well, fine, maybe you do, sir.
We do.
Let him speak, please.
He asked me a question, Councilman Aversa, I'm answering his question.
Second, sir, since you're back and you're CEO, how'd you do on the Chaffee properties? Did it require why they have more trucks there now? Parked?
Would you like to talk about that? Our, our Attenborough Administrator will answer your question.
Mr. Morfesus, I did speak to our property maintenance, um, officer regarding, you know, I'm sorry, I can't see you.
No, you're not looking at me, no, no problem.
Um, the problem is that I, I've told him that living in town, um, there's probably vehicles at night that he hasn't seen, and I asked him to, uh, readjust his schedule so he's able to see what vehicles are there at night. I think you had mentioned to me that at night there is additional cars that are being parked. He did assure me that he was going to call Joe Chaffee this week, and, um, and if nothing was handled by Mr. Chaffee, that a summons would be issued.
Okay.
I gave him until the end of this week, which was today, and hopefully he'll report back to me next week with either a letter or summonses that were issued.
Did anybody, did anybody decide, did anybody read the regulations on how cars are parked behind there?
He's aware that there should not be any cars parked on grass, on lawn.
Or gravel.
Or gravel.
In Englewood Cliffs?
Now, there, now, there's no, uh, pavement back there.
That's correct.
So.
So there should be no cars back there, period.
Well, however, there are businesses that are renting from him.
There's only one business, Ms. Duffy, that's renting back there, that's commercial, and nobody's complaining about that business.
Correct, and if that-
I'm complaining about the three properties that are residential, that he pays residential on, and he's parking on, and not only that, he has sealed buildings with gas and electric running, which is in pure violation in case there's a fire, and puts every citizen around there in danger, and business.
To be honest, I didn't get into the, um, the sealed, uh, buildings, what we were-
Yeah, well, you see, his problem, you see-
I'm sorry, may I finish?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you. So what we spoke about were the vehicles, and, um, I did say to him, what was ever renting and has a vehicle back there, that is permissible, because that's part of the rent and the agreement.
Hundred percent.
Any other vehicles need to be, well, I took his time. Any other vehicles need to be removed. So I hope to have a, um, report back next week, and if you would like to call me or come to my office to discuss, you're more than welcome to.
Thank you very much, you people have a very nice evening, and thank you very much for your job well done.
Thank you.
Yes. Do you want me to hold your camera for you?
You want to?
Your arm, your, your arm looked like it was getting tired.
It was. Because of the nonsense that usually happens at these meetings. Um, Andrew Nick, F54 Elm Street. First of all, I am absolutely disgusted by the comments former council president Mick Moore made regarding me. I consider-
This, this isn't about resident on resident.
She was allowed to speak regarding me, and I'm going to take that full opportunity to trust her libelous comments regarding me. And rest assured, those comments are libelous, and I will take action against them, because they are repulsive.
I believe you're a public figure, but go ahead.
And so is she, apparently, because she's a member of this ad hoc committee that she got up there and saying that, uh, she's part of. So what is it, is it both ways?
She's also on the plane.
And she's also on the plane, of course, thank you, Council President. I find it absolutely disgusting, the comment that she made regarding me. I take personal insult to them, and like I said, I will consider action against them for libel, because they are completely unwarranted, untrue, and she has absolutely no idea regarding what my motivation-
We have no idea what you're talking about.
Well, she got out here-
If you have something borough-related, I'm happy to hear it.
She got up here and accused me being part of a fire department involvement to take her down, or some other sort of wacky conspiracy theory that she has, and I resent it. I'm coming here as a private citizen, as a resident of this town. I do not represent the fire department, I do not represent anybody but myself in this. And if there are some wild accusations coming out of this, I find it absolutely reprehensible.
Okay, there might have been some confusion, because you are wearing a fire department sweatshirt, so.
Am I allowed to?
Well, there might be some confusion, and-
You're wearing, you're wearing a business suit.
No, no, but you said you're here individually, but you're wearing a fire department sweatshirt, so, go ahead.
Mario, just stop it, all right? You, you're, you're childlike as usual. Um, my comment regarding this meeting is I wasn't-
I absorb a lot of insults, I'll absorb that one, too.
Are, are you done yet? Because, you know, the last time when you were on the phone and you hit the dial button, you know-
You can keep on insulting me. I really can't.
Are you done?
Oh, are you done?
Let's let him speak.
What, what else do you have?
I want to say that the way in which you're conducting these meetings, especially the treatment of the Borough Attorney, is childlike and immature. Now, you worry about wasting taxpayer money and being responsible for the taxpayer and setting a better tone of civility, you're, you're, you're the guilty party here. Councilwoman, Council President O ran the meeting, the last special meeting, and she did it without any sort of yelling, screaming, or argumentative disruption.
Yeah, it was beautiful, she gave Chaffee a million dollars to retire.
And you're here for two minutes-
She gave Chaffee a million dollars to retire, how beautiful is that, right?
What are you looking for, sir?
You don't have the phone, Mr. Woo.
You're here-
You're out of order, you will be thrown out.
You're here for two minutes-
Time.
And you make a mockery of yourself.
No, I took your time, go ahead, you can finish.
No, I'm gonna respect, I'm gonna respect this council.
You know, it'd be nice, though, once in a while, I think it should be a rule that everybody who comes up here says one positive thing about something in town, or somebody in town, or one of the council people, one of the former council people, somebody in the fire department, somebody in the police department, let's just try to be positive.
Why don't you start?
I do, I do all the time, I, 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 I thank Officer O'Shea.
You set the tone when you walked in, you're a liar.
I-
You're a liar.
Are you done?
You're a liar.
I'm a liar now?
You're a liar and dishonest.
Okay, if you say so.
The record shows it.
Yeah, well, you know what, though, you're, you're the, um, you're the person on the Chaffee tapes who was supposed to be taking me down, right?
I heard the Chaffee tapes.
Yeah, good.
I'm literally-
Well, you'll, you'll have the opportunity to swear to that, it's fine. Anybody else?
Motion, people.
All right, so, uh, Mr. Morfesus, I heard that, you need to leave.
What's that?
I heard what you said, you need to leave.
I said asshole, I didn't say to you, sir.
Yeah, you did.
What?
Yeah, you did, you looked right at me and you said that.
I'm leaving.
Officer O'Shea, I, I won't tolerate that, please throw him out.
I'll go, sir, sir.
You, you, you have to be respectful, I'll take a lot of insults, but I'm not gonna have you calling me an asshole, all right? You can leave now.
You blind every door that you knock on.
Make a motion to close?
Second.
No, there's, there's somebody else.
Sorry.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, I'm off. Thank you.
Good evening, Dave De Gregorio, 165 Charlotte Place, how's everyone this evening?
Great, how are you?
I'm doing very well.
Excellent.
Um, just a couple of, I can give you a new microphone here, this is a little broken down here, so it's just like that. Um, a couple of-
Switch him.
It's all right.
Please.
Thanks. So a couple of suggestions, uh, moving forward, and hopefully we can move forward in, in a civil and, uh, uh, humanistic way, seeing people's feelings and, uh, being conscious of being respectful, even if a person is not being respectful, to be respectful back, I mean, let's give that a try, maybe it'll work. Uh, I would love to see this town leverage a little bit more of its history. I think there's an interesting history in this town, I know a little bit, uh, about, uh, the Frank Sinatra connection and the, um, uh, the jazz recording studio. Um, those should be regarded, I, in my opinion, as, uh, treasures in this town and leveraged in one way or another. Um, people, it would be great if people would come to visit Englewood Cliffs if we had things for them to visit here, other than the headquarters. Um, and I'd like somehow for you all to keep that in the back of your mind. Um, I did say something about the newspapers being thrown on-
Before you go on, do you have any recommendations about leveraging off of that musical history? I mean, we were gonna do a band show at the park and maybe have concerts under the Stars and everything.
Well, I don't think that's necessary, and O'Kendall Fly doesn't have a band show, and they have plenty of music.
I think they do, I think they-
At the, um, at the Roosevelt Park, there is a band show there, and they actually have bands to play there.
At the Roosevelt Park?
It's across from the-
Spider Rail火车.
From the fire department, police station.
I'm not a-
Other than there, no.
And the band show there will be-
Yeah, there is, there was a-
I know that Mayor Ruston is very much into the, into music and doing entertainment in the town, and I know that they bring in trailers and they go, you know, they, I think the county has a trailer, and they bring in, uh, music, um, and that's, I think, a nice thing, uh, for O'Kendall Fly. Um, the, the recycle, I, you know, a couple of years ago, I made a recommendation that we put a fence around it, and it just, it just sickens me when, um, there is piles of cardboard and recycled, and when there's a wind, it blows all up and down Hudson Terrace. Um, I would recommend spending some money in that area and putting a high fence around there, and possibly even selling keys to the residents. Uh, I know for a fact that, um, everyone in the area knows that they can dump their recycle there, and sometimes they dump paint and other things that aren't appropriate.
All right.
Uh, but, that's okay.
Go ahead, you can-
That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
So I wanna keep it positive, and, um, I also think that is very important moving forward, uh, that, um, everyone has to readjust to their, um, to their positions or modified positions, and I think we should do that with a, with a heart and, uh, with a soul and with goodwill. Thank you.
Mr. De Gregorio?
Yes.
Further to that, I know you had mentioned that a few years ago, and it always stayed with me. Just this week, I spoke to our DPW superintendent about different options, because I too have seen cars pulling in from New York and dumping.
Yes.
In fact, Mr. Neville commented that, I'm not gonna say where he lives, but coming to work one day by coincidence, there was a vehicle in front of him from the same town that went to our DPW site and dumped. So, uh, what we're looking into, either caged area and selling cars, or perhaps limiting the, um, the drop-off to once a week and pay a DPW, um, employee a lot of, um, clean community funds? Like on Sat-, on Saturday for about three hours, having all the residents come in and drop off, and that will be it. So, once a week on, on the weekend. So it was an option.
I was just saying on that, too, just that I have seen, as my experience as, um, the prosecutor down there, the police department does issue summonses, and when they see people doing that, and we have prosecutors for.
Okay.
So, it has been, it is something that the police department is aware of, and they have taken, uh, steps, and they do issue summonses, and I know that the court does press that.
Great, and I don't want, I'm sorry, I'm going a little over, but I don't want anyone to misunderstand me. I love our village and grounds department, I think they're all great hard workers, and I don't mean that critical in any way, uh, of, of any of them, so I just wanted to-
It's not taken as an insult, but thank you anyway. I just wanted to let you know that your ideas are always great and they don't fall on deaf ears.
Thank you so much.
Is there anybody else in the public who wishes to be heard? Marty, anything from Brady Padavale tonight, nothing?
Motion to close.
A motion to close the public portion?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
So we're gonna go into closed session, and before we do that, I just want to make clear that from my perspective as mayor, the affordable housing issue is a major issue in this town, and we're dealing with it. Prior to this January first, January third, when the new council came in, the prior council and myself put the town in procedural compliance with all applicable laws relating to affordable housing in New Jersey. And we are working on a substantive solution to comply with our requirements. So we created a housing plan and we had it approved. But I want to be clear before we go into closed session that I oppose any residential units at Eight Hundred Sylvan. And the reason I'm telling you this is because since January third, I've been marginalized as mayor. I've been excluded from discussions, I've been excluded from communications, I've been excluded from meetings. So I want the public to understand that my position has not changed with respect to compliance and how we comply. I believe in home rule, we will solve our own problems, we will comply with law. We don't have to like the law, but we will comply with the law, that's the way the law works. And I'm telling you this again because I've been shut out by Councilman O, Versa, Sabari, Song, Ellen Park, even our special counsel won't talk to me anymore, Jeff Serenian doesn't call me back. And Mr. Wunsch, of course, he never shares anything with me because he feels that he doesn't have to talk to the mayor. He can only talk to the people he wants to talk to, but that's not the job of an attorney, right? You're supposed to talk to everybody you represent, and the governing body is who you represent. The governing body is the council and the mayor, okay? So you've excluded me. And I want the public to understand this, because today I actually brought a lawsuit against them personally to reassert my mayoral rights, all right? I was elected, and the problem with towns and states and counties and the federal government is that people who are not elected are making decisions that should be done and made by elected officials. So we have people like Mr. Wunsch running around thinking that he has authority, he has no authority. And this is a big problem, not only in Englewood Cliffs, but throughout the country. Unelected officials making decisions that should be with elected officials. I'm the one who worked to get elected, you didn't, you got appointed, and you're a political appointee, okay? So shame on you, I'm here for the citizens of this town, okay? That's all I'm saying.
We know border mayor.
You are recognized. You are recognized, you don't have to raise your voice.
I make a motion for ordinance number 2019-02.
We have to follow-
Introducing and-
Oh, so you're doing the ordinance? Okay, so the-
Give me a second.
A second.
Okay, discussion, so that ordinance is, it's a redo. At our reorg meeting, the Democratic council brought a repeal of the no-pay-to-play ordinance that I had put in place with my council in December. Our no-pay-to-play ordinance basically said, and it's probably the strictest in New Jersey, if you contribute to any politician in town or in the county, you can't get appointed to do anything for Englewood Cliffs, okay? So we don't want people buying jobs. Now, it was never an issue with the people I appointed, because we never appointed anyone who made any contributions.
That's accurate.
It is true, actually. So what happened was, they incorrectly introduced it on January third, and we told them, and then at the regular meeting on January fifteenth, I believe, we told you again. And you almost, at that meeting, decided to do the right thing and just reintroduce it properly, but you didn't do it. So when it came to me, and by the way, at that meeting, nobody would admit to actually writing the thing. And it was bizarrely poorly written, okay? Whoever wrote that should not be charging the borough. So I vetoed it, which is my right to do, and I vetoed it as follows. I hereby exercise my power under this New Jersey statute and hereby veto ordinance number 2019-01 in its entirety. My reasons are stated below. Ordinance 1901 was purportedly introduced at first reading at the annual reorganization meeting of the mayor and council held on January third. The manner and method of introduction of ordinance 1901 violated multiple provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Ordinance 1901 was purportedly passed on second reading at a regular meeting of the mayor and council on January fifteenth. The manner and method of passage also violated multiple provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Additionally, ordinance 1901 is carelessly written and full of procedural and substantive defects. First, the ordinance is not written as an ordinance, it does not ordain anything at all. Again, shame on whoever wrote that. There are two actions stated in the ordinance. The first is to resolve that the borough clerk not submit ordinance 1818 to the secretary of state, and the second was to have the borough clerk, it was resolved to have her organize a request for qualifications. Now, ordinance are required to be legislative in nature. The first action is to resolve that the borough clerk not submit ordinance 1818 to the secretary of state, and the second one was to resolve that the borough clerk issue requests for qualifications. Those are resolutions, those aren't ordinances. Ordinances are required. Second, nowhere in the ordinance is the actual language of a repeal of the prior ordinance ever mentioned. So it falls down there as well. The language in both the title and in the actual clauses talks about introduction and anticipation of repeal, but it never actually repeals anything. It's also, most importantly, 1901 is just wholly adverse to the best interests of the borough and demonstrates the usual order of business by the Democratic majority for years before I became mayor. The majority is seeking to repeal my no-pay-to-play ordinance, and it's just so that they could appoint their friends who donated to their campaigns, and they could make money and they get their money back, basically, that's the way it works, right? So my appointees always adhere to the spirit of ordinance 1818, no one ever donated. Now, it was interesting, because the Democratic majority here said it was unreasonable, mine was too strict. They couldn't deal with it, they couldn't find anyone to represent the borough. Well, in fact, our planning board, just recently in January, appointed professionals who are in full adherence of 1818, so it's not unreasonable. It was actually done by our planning board, and if our planning board could do it, certainly our council could have done it also. So what I actually think is unreasonable is that council members O, Song, Sabari, Ellen Park, and Aversa putting the interests of their supporters ahead of the borough's interests and those of our citizens. So shame on them, and now they're introducing a response to my veto, which is an introduction of a new repeal ordinance.
We'll call, please. Councilperson Wu? Song?
Here.
Sabari? Park? Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
So that's passed, I'm still opposed to it in its entirety. I think 1818 was a better no-pay-to-play ordinance, because citizens are better protected there. Now you see where the council stands, everyone, here and at home.
Make a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Excuse me, I haven't read the resolution.
Okay.
Whereas the mayor and council of Borough of Englewood Cliffs has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain confidential matters, whereas the minutes of the closed session will remain confidential as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act and shall be, or shall be released when there is no further need for confidentiality as authorized by the borough attorney. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and council of Borough of Englewood Cliffs will go into closed session following the matters as permitted under Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 1012 and 4-12. Items one, two, and three are Borough of Englewood Cliffs affordable housing, Eight Hundred Sylvan Avenue LLC versus the Borough of Englewood Cliffs, Mayor and Council Planning Board, and Eight Hundred Sylvan Avenue LLC versus the Planning Board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone will go. Okay, we're, can I motion to come out of closed session?
So move.
Second.
Okay, we can't take a vote on it if we're out of closed session, and we're gonna- We've lost a few people while we were in closed session, we lost Councilman Aversa, Councilman Song, Councilman Wu left earlier, and Ellen Park wasn't here, so we're just gonna adjourn. Can I motion to adjourn?
So move.
I think that's okay, all in favor?
No.